Good evening and welcome to the July 9 Civil Service Commission meeting. May I please have roll call?
Commissioner Yakuvian?
Yes.
Commissioner Manukian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hatamian?
Here.
For the record, Commissioner Devine and Chair Gazarian are absent tonight.
What's the next item on agenda?
Minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
You have unanimous consent? Can I get the next item on agenda, please?
Oral communications.
Do we have any cards? I don't show any cards. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the commission at this time? I see none. Could we move to the next item, please?
Class specification for approval, safety administrator.
Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this item is the revision of an existing class specification for the management position of safety administrator. This is a position within the Human Resources Department. As we anticipate some movement upcoming in filling this position, we felt it would be a good time to review this specification. This specification has not been updated since 1992, so really the primary purpose is to update this and make it a bit more contemporary with some of the issues that are dealt with in the safety field. It's nothing too significant as far as the changes, just a few more references to Cal OSHA, some of their regulations, ergonomics, and obviously some of the acronyms have changed along the way. We've also bumped up the minimum qualifications for this position with regard to experience from what used to be just three years and up to six years, which we feel is appropriate. This is, again, a managerial level position overseeing all the occupational safety in the organization. So that's really the substance of these revisions. If you have any questions, be happy to try and answer them. Ms. Hunanian from my staff worked on this process. She's here, as is our safety administrator, I'm sorry, our risk manager, Steve Martin. He used to be the safety administrator. Mr. Chair.
Do we have any questions for my fellow commissioners?
Move to approve.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Yakuvian?
Yes, I agree.
Commissioner Manukian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hatamian?
Yes. Next item?
Class specification for approval, workers' compensation adjuster series.
Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this, too, is a revision of an existing class specification series for our workers' compensation adjuster series. And this, too, is within the Human Resources Department, and this, too, is an area that we need to fill, fill a position. We've had some turnover in this area, and we're looking at, again, filling an adjuster or analyst level position. This is a somewhat rare and unusual circumstance where we're actually seeking to reduce the minimum qualification relative to formal education. And it's not something we like to do, but a recent attempt to fill a position, an adjuster position in this series, made it abundantly clear that many of the people who are professionals in this field really are more likely to pursue professional certifications, experience and training in the work comp field as opposed to formal education, the traditional sense, bachelor's degrees or associate degrees. It's just a very specialized field, particularly in the public sector, where we have public safety and police and fire and so much, so many hazards associated with that kind of work. What we're proposing, again, is making the AA degree at the lower levels of this series desirable and requiring that the degree only at the senior workers' compensation analyst level. We've actually bolstered the experience requirement at some of the levels, and of course, we have the specification addresses the various certifications in this profession, which, again, appear to be more of what we need to find when we're going out and seeking candidates for this process. So with that, I'll leave it with the commission. Again, we are always very hesitant to reduce any type of minimum qualification, but in all honesty, after experiencing the recent recruitment where we went through an extensive open recruitment process and really ended up with one candidate out of many applicants who ultimately didn't, or that candidate looked good and didn't work out, lasted about a month. So with that, again, we're seeking your approval to modify this specification series, and the same group of people are here, Mr. Martin, who's our risk manager, as well as Ms. Hunanian and our work comp administrators here as well. If you have questions.
In all the years that I've been here, this is the first time I've seen you do this. And you know, in the past, I've asked you, and I agree, what you're doing is correct because you're, by making that requirement, I think you're really limiting yourself. And so you are right when you say you don't do this. I've never seen you do this.
Well, that was actually one of the questions that I had, and I think that you addressed it, so thank you very much for that. And it seems to make sense, especially if you've had recent experience in having some difficulty in filling the position. I guess it would be wise to try it this way and see if you have more success, so.
I guess I do have one question as well, and I do appreciate your efforts, Mr. Doyle, and I understand how times are with recruitment and finding qualified individuals. What methods did we use in the past in attempting to recruit for the original classification that we had in place? Do you recall?
Mr. Chair, if I recall, and I believe, was it Ms. Hunanian did you do this? It was really the traditional outreach that we would have done, advertising in those specialized journals and websites that focus on workers' compensation. And they do exist. There are professional organizations that are out there. It seemed to have been a fairly targeted approach, and we weren't, you know, we didn't have a shortage of applicants who sort of met the qualifications on paper, but ultimately, when we brought them in and conducted our selection process, for the most part, our needs were not being met by what showed up at the door. But again, it was traditional outreach advertising, and we actually had heard that state comp fund, they're like the largest workers' comp entity in the state, had laid off a bunch of employees, and we were hoping to maybe get someone good from that situation. But again, we, somewhat fruitless, our efforts.
Yeah, it is a very specialized area of employment, and the fact that we use specialized journals in attempting to recruit individuals and, you know, workers' comp, one of their offices is right here on Central, so it seems like we made all the efforts. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Unanimous consent? Can I get the next item, please?
Class specification and job bulletin for approval, police chief.
Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you. This is a specification and bulletin for approval for our police chief position. And again, I want to thank the commission for agreeing to meet on this special meeting. I think the impetus for this meeting was, in fact, to, was to get the ball rolling on this particular recruitment process, so we do appreciate that. As you know, our police chief, Ron DePampa, put in for retirement, or he announced his retirement a few months ago. He is still with us, working on an hourly capacity, and he is committed to staying with us until this position is filled with a suitable replacement. And again, we're now seeking to begin the process for filling this position. What's before you are two things. One is a revision of the class specification for this position, and the other is approval of the bulletin for police chief. And this bulletin is technically the bulletin that we will use to go out and recruit. We are in the process of working with an executive search firm who will take this bulletin, elements of it, and turn it into a more stylish type of brochure, but for the most part, it's the bulletin and the factors that are within that are the basis for this recruitment. And I do want to point out that we did make some revisions to that bulletin, and you have a copy of that on your dais, and we also have, in the back of the room, changes to that, and mostly has to do with the selection process itself for the position. It's a slight amendment to what you've been provided already, and I do apologize for that, but we've been in discussions up until the last few days on various companies that will assist us in the outreach for this process. Up until even this morning, we were talking with one particular company that does this. But really, what is before you is the specification. This specification was last updated in 2002. That was actually the last time we did a open recruitment process for this position. And again, we're revising that to, again, make the specification a bit more contemporary with some of the latest tactical, some of the latest tools that are used in crime prevention and crime analysis. Additionally, the bulletin spells out, again, all of the essential functions, minimum qualifications, and most importantly, the bulletin covers the selection process that we anticipate utilizing. As I said earlier, we are, we have settled upon an executive search firm, Norm Robertson Associates, and they will assist us with the outreach as far as finding suitable candidates. And that's, what they do is actually a very proactive approach, whereas most of the time when we conduct our recruitments in-house, we go out, we post an ad, we try and find good candidates. The executive search firm is that individual that goes out and knows various people in the profession and calls, gets on the phone and tries, as I said, a very proactive approach to finding the best candidates who are out there. And we're not limiting this search firm to simply Southern California or even California. If we can find outstanding candidates outside the area, we will do so as well. The process, again, will be a filing period that would start approximately July 22 and run for a little over a month. We anticipate the filing closing about August 26. At that point, we would ask the search firm to, again, identify probably a small handful of candidates, probably in the neighborhood of about 12, and we'll do a sort of a pre-screening assessment process where, working with the search firm, the city manager, members of my staff, identifying those candidates that we think are most suitable and ready for a challenge for this position. That part of the process will be worth 40% of the overall scoring. And then at the end of that, once we've identified an even smaller group, I would say probably in the neighborhood of four, five or six candidates, we would then go through a three-part community panel, I'm sorry, a three-part assessment panel, which would be worth 60%, and that process would be divided by a professional panel consisting of police chiefs and possibly city managers, and there'll be a community panel where we would select individuals from the community, some of our stakeholders, the various groups that are represented, and have them play a part in this selection process. And then the third part of that assessment panel would consist of what we call an internal organization panel, where we have fellow executives from the Glendale organization along with representatives from our employee associations, most likely the GPOA and our Glendale City Employees Association, who each have, you know, a stake and who gets selected as well. So we're trying to make this process as inclusive as possible. I pity the candidates for the recruitment process because...
Are you trying to scare them away?
Oh, no. It's well worth the effort, but it will be somewhat of an extensive process, and we hope to attract the best candidates. So with that, if you have questions, be happy to try and answer them. And I know the city manager wanted to be here, but he is with the city council right now in closed session, so I still anticipate him walking in at any point, but I'll do my best to answer your questions if you have them.
Just a quick question, just for my curiosity. In the, do you remember in the past, every time we've gone out for a police, how many times have we act, the person that we've hired has been from the outside? And I'm not looking for exact number, but just if you remember.
Commissioner Manukian, I've been here almost 24 years, and I recall the recruitment processes for, I think, four, perhaps five chiefs. And I can go, I'll work backwards. Again, this is an open process. The previous one was promotional, where then Assistant Chief DePampa was promoted from within. Prior to that, Chief Cyberling was appointed on an open process, I'm sorry, I skipped Chief Adams, and prior to that was Chief Cyberling, and prior to that was Chief Jim Anthony, and those were all open recruitment processes.
All of them from the outside, huh?
Yes. And prior to that was a fellow named Dave Thompson, who was an internal appointment, and that was sometime in the late 80s that he was hired. So we've done a mixture of both at this point. Again, we have some candidates internal who would make, I think, some excellent candidates, but...
I agree with you.
Our captain ranks are outstanding. We have two captains who are relatively newly appointed, but, you know, very capable, and I would anticipate them to apply.
Do you have to be a captain? That was going to be my second question. For example, can a lieutenant from Burbank apply? Or is being a captain a...
Typically, for this position, and the specification does address command-level experience, so typically, we would be looking for somebody at least from this organization or an organization this size at the captain level or assistant chief level. But that's, you know, a lot of that just depends on what the candidates look like and what the pre-assessment panels show. If we were to look, again, if we were to get a chief from another organization, from, you know, say a police chief from a smaller organization or an equal size, that would be obviously someone well-suited. If we were to look to LAPD or the Sheriff's Department, we'd look at, you know, the commander level, deputy chief level, something along those lines, so.
Well, whoever it is, I hope they know this community, so, and I'm sure, that's why personally, hopefully, it would be somebody internal. That's mine, but it's an open process.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't actually. I, hopefully, whoever it is, it sounds like the interview process is extensive, so we'll get to know them and they'll get to know us.
Absolutely.
I do have just a couple of questions. I guess I want to piggyback on what Commissioner Manukian, the point that he raised regarding the level of experience. Says that in the experience section of the bulletin that we're looking for somebody that's responsible, command-level duties, and that opens up captain level. I know at the Sheriff's Department, we have captains, commanders, we have acting captains, we have acting commanders, we also have chiefs.
Commander above captain?
It is above a captain.
So it's between the chief and the, I see.
Correct, yeah. It's at the command level, it's higher, and captains would typically report to commanders. And commanders typically report to chiefs. So I guess my question is whether or not we are going to define kind of like the parameters for an applicant to know whether or not they qualify for this position by possibly stating captains and above or acting captains and above of that nature. I know command level can be at many different levels. For example, a lieutenant within a larger organization can be considered to have command level because they have a large number of sergeants and deputies and maybe even civilian personnel. And they'll do budgeting, they'll have to obviously worry about shifts, and they are the go-to person whenever an incident arises within that certain station or community. So do my commissioners feel as if though it's necessary to...
That's why I was confused in a sense that when you read this, you don't get a clear answer. But I think what I'm hearing from Mr. Doyle is, and I see your point, and I do tend to agree, that wouldn't it make more sense to be very clear as far as what you consider? Or is there a specific reason that you'd like to keep it this way?
Well, members of the commission, this is how it was put forth, but I think what command level seemed to indicate is, you know, many of the things that the chairman just mentioned, someone who has, you know, has that experience overseeing and managing a large contingent of employees engaged in, you know, what you would consider to be traditional managerial functions, budgeting, staffing, assigning work, like sort of a broad-based aspect. Typically, in this organization, you would need to be a captain in order to experience that, unless there's something I'm not aware of. In a Sheriff's Department or LAPD, a much larger department, that may be something that's attained at a lower level, at a lieutenant level, or maybe there are multiple levels of lieutenant, but...
So you're leaving your options open in a sense, which is good.
That makes sense.
I believe so, and, you know, I just, you know, I think the individual, let's say we're dealing with somebody from a very small department where there's, you know, there's a chief and, you know, maybe a lieutenant and three sergeants, and that's the whole department, you know? Because there are many departments that size, and, you know, you look in the San Gabriel Valley area, it wouldn't be the same when looking at anyone below the level of chief in that type of organization.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Actually, I like the language, the command-level language, because I think that it would not unnecessarily exclude someone from a very large police department that has substantial managerial experience.
And doesn't fall within the captain.
And everyone else in the smaller ones, yeah.
This way, at least you have your options open. Move to approve? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm just going to go to my next question, and I'll be very brief. There's a section within the bulletin that states that the chief will be responsible for recommending appropriate personnel action. Is this in reference to disciplinary matters?
Mr. Chair, typically, yes. That indicates hiring and firing and the related types of personnel actions.
Okay. And is it usually the chief that makes the recommendation, or is it that he is the decision-maker when it comes to disciplinary matters?
Under our rules and, you know, the policies of the department, the individual who effectuates discipline is the department head. In this case, it would be the chief. Now, you're all aware that in a SCELI-type proceeding...
Exactly.
You know, the individual can appeal to the police chief or the department, whatever department head, but that's in a predisciplinary component, that's in the SCELI proposal level. Once the chief or whichever level that the person being disciplined has appealed to, makes that determination, then it's the, is the chief or the department head that makes, takes the actual action. So the chief, any department head in this organization, again, they're the appointing authority. They make that decision.
And does the city manager get involved at that point? Once, let's say, the letter of imposition comes out, does the city manager have to approve it based on that recommendation? Or is it safe to say that the chief of police is the one that makes the decision to impose discipline?
It is the chief of police, although we have here the, because it's a generalized personnel action involving somebody either being demoted or fired, oddly enough, the city manager, as the approving authority under our rules, signs that letter as well, so.
Okay. And one last question, and I'm done. I noticed in the changes of what was the previous bulletin to the current, there's, I noted three different places within the bulletin where we are enforcing and/or requesting that the new chief be in charge of and manage workplace diversity issues. And I noticed a workplace diversity issue pop up in three different locations within the bulletin, which I personally want to make a comment on and say that I appreciate, and I hope that that gets carried out as we move forward. At the same time, I would like to also ask Mr. Doyle whether or not there's a mechanism in place to promote this diverse workplace that we're looking for within the Glendale Police Department. Is there some type of a study that's conducted internally whenever a chief is posed with a new vacancy in order to determine the diversity level within the department?
That's a great question, and it's been an ongoing priority of this chief and the previous chiefs, as well as, you know, my department. Our efforts at primarily outreach have been, I'd say, well-established and well-documented, and it can take many forms with regard to where we advertise, the places we go to advertise, the job fairs. I mean, our objective, now that we're starting to do some hiring, we've been hiring freezes for, off and on, for years, but our objective is to do as much as we can within this, within the Glendale organization and really, really seek to reflect the diversity within Glendale. And that means, you know, different community events, having a presence there, having outreach to various community groups, you know, some based on, you know, the various clubs we have, the organizations that surround, you know, various ethnicities within the community. And again, we certainly advertise in any different places. And some of you who've been on the commission law, you've seen some of the videos that we've done that focus on, you know, specific outreach to specific groups and, you know, just some of the other things. We do offer bilingual pay, which is, you know, a, it's sort of an indirect means of getting people who speak other languages, but we have many of our officers and many of our employees citywide who speak, you know, not just Armenian, Spanish, you know, some of the more common languages spoken in the community, but, you know, we have an increasing number of employees and officers who speak, you know, Korean and Filipino, and so...
You've come a long way. I got to tell you that. I applaud you. I applaud the police department, the management. You guys have come a long way from, at least from the time that I started, and you guys have been proactively, there's always room for improvement, but you guys have really come a long way.
I agree with Commissioner Manukian.
And Mr. Chair, might I add, another tool that we utilize is, we do, our internal audit department does a workforce demographics report, and again, some of our veteran commissioners have seen that report. We now do it every two years to sort of measure our organization from our diversity, and it's amazing to see how this organization has changed in the last five to 10 years relative to diversity, and you see it drastic terms of the people that have been hired in the last five to 10 years. years versus those who are retiring. Our workforce is changing tremendously. I, we hope to have that study done. That's sort of the barometer for measuring our success in this fashion, and I think we've done quite well, and quite well at all levels, whether it's police, fire, upper management, middle management, our executive team. We've gotten to be very diverse, and it's...
Keep up the good work.
Yeah. And I guess my question was more towards whether or not the department, not the city, whether or not the department itself has an internal mechanism of doing a study to determine its levels and the diversity within each level, or is it just a DHR function?
Well, it's not just a HR function. Again, every department is entrusted in this. The police department has been really, really proactive in this effort. As far as any specific studies, not that I'm aware of, but the efforts are there in the recruitment process, particularly when we have officer recruits to fill and try to fill our academies. We do quite well, and we try to, again, focus, you know, on our own community here, and, you know, when we do the written exams, we try to do as many, many different types of, you know, outreach events to where, you know, people can be prepared for coming in and taking that test, where it's not just some, something that we hit them with, and, you know, answer their questions, and, you know, and I know our officers spend a lot of time in the schools. Unfortunately, we've had to cut back on our school resource officer program, but the presence in the schools has been a really great recruiting tool. And, you know, at that tender age where you're trying to get the young people to make the right decisions, I think, you know, having that role model there has been very helpful. And that's, you know, that's a very important thing, because, as you know, when we hire officers, really anybody who works in the police building, they have to pass a background investigation, and, you know, we just try to emphasize potential candidates at a very young age to go on the right path, so they're able to pass that background and hopefully have a career with us.
But, you know, one thing that I have to also applaud you guys, you have done all that, but you have also not brought the standards down either to let people in just because of quota. That's one thing that I applaud you, that level of quality has never been compromised. And that's thanks to management and the department itself, so I applaud you.
We agree. Everything I've mentioned, you know, we do that in concert with the same hiring process, even the, you know, the bilingual processes that we have done, same exam, same standards, same interview process, same everything. So, no, the standards have not been reduced in any way, shape, or form.
And I think the fact that we have a bulletin out here for the chief of police position within the city of Glendale, and within the bulletin, we have, again, three different locations where we're talking about diversity and promoting diversity within the city of Glendale speaks to, you know, what we look forward to in our next candidate. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have unanimous consent.
Get us our next chief.
Next item?
Agenda forecast.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this item, the agenda forecast, the meeting of the July 24th. We have one item, the advertising budget expenditure report. We do anticipate a closed-session item for that evening, so that would be July 24th, and I see Commissioner Manukian will not be here.
Nope. And don't call me either.
Don't give us your number. The August 14th, 2013 meeting, I was anticipating having that meeting with a closed-session item to deliberate over one of our current hearings. However, it does not appear that we'll be able to do that in time for that particular meeting. So, the meeting of August 14th, unless there's something that is urgent, that would have to be addressed that evening, could be a potential meeting that we would cancel. I will also not be here. They're actually letting me take a vacation, so...
See? Don't let it happen again.
Commissioner Yakubian's birthday, we would not want to have a meeting that night.
So, we're taking the day off.
So, that's a potential, and again, we can play it by ear, see what workload looks like. But as a result of that, again, anticipate deliberation over an existing hearing on August 28th, 2013.
Great. Next item?
Civil Service Commission, staff comments.
Any comments? Done?
I've got, the attorney's sitting next to me, I can't make a comment.
Next item?
No closed sessions, so we'll move to adjournment.
We'll move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, we're done.
Good evening.